Mrs. Hayke, here. Mr. Gambiani?
Here.
Mr. Matheson is absent this evening. Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mrs. Swanson, here. Mr. Roman?
Here.
Mrs. Inteheart?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, members of our fellow citizens who were killed suddenly 12 years ago today. I'd like to request a moment of silence for my members. Thank you. Now I'd like to open the hearing, the public hearing of the 2013-14 project. Does anybody else want to speak now? Do you have a motion to open the hearing? Move by, Mrs. Swanson.
Next.
Second, Mrs. Hayke, all in favor?
I am.
Opposed? Okay, the public hearing is now open. As I understand, there is no one who has requested to speak during the public hearing, so I would not extend a motion to close the public hearing of the 2013-14 project.
So move.
Move in, Mr. Roman.
Second.
Second amendment.
Second amendment, Mr. Gambiani, all in favor?
I am.
Opposed? Motion heard. Thank you. Next, finally, on the agenda, communications with the public school. Mrs. Farley, attend.
Can you involve the hearing? I want to welcome everyone to Jefferson Early Childhood Center. I'm not sure this is working. Is it? No. Can you hear me now? There you go. All right, I want to welcome everyone to Jefferson Early Childhood Center. I'm Stephanie Farley, and it's an honor and a privilege to be principal here at Jefferson. I just want to take this opportunity to thank each and every Board of Education member for your leadership and inspiring excellence in all that we do throughout District 200. You ensure that each child is college and career-ready by ensuring that each child reaches their potential. And we know that college and career readiness begins here with our youngest learners at Jefferson Early Childhood Center. Each and every day, our children make huge achievements and advances basically because of the talent and expertise of staff here at Jefferson. And I'd like to take this opportunity to have the staff stand and be acknowledged for what they do for children and their families on a daily basis. If you could stand. Many people don't know this, but in order to work here as a teacher at Jefferson Early Childhood Center, you have to have either three or four certificates. So our early childhood teachers serve the role as the general education teacher, the special education teacher, the English language learner teacher, and now with new state and federal mandates, they also have to be the bilingual teacher. Because if we have more than 20 children speaking the same language, we need to have bilingual instruction. This year is our first year of the program, and we do have a Spanish instructional class that we provide here at Jefferson. I also want to acknowledge and thank our PTA. They do amazing enrichment activities for our students here at Jefferson, and they also provided the treats for the Board of Education and refreshments here tonight. So thank you to the PTA. This year, the Board of Education set forth four goals for District 200. And as you can see here, our key to success lies in each of those goals. All those goals are realized in each of the buildings within District 200. Here at Jefferson, we have so many additional state and federal mandates with decreasing resources. So in order to be physically responsible, we need to make sure that we are operating under a balanced budget. In order to do that, we seek out grants, we seek out partnerships, and we also seek out collaborative relations with community. We're really thrilled to announce that this is our second year partnered with Metropolitan Family Services to operate a head start early childhood program which is located at Johnson Elementary School, which is one of our satellite sites. This program is federally funded, and it's for students in District 200 who are at risk of academic failure. So this program provides the skills and support that they need to be successful kindergarten and beyond. Also, I'd like to acknowledge Dr. Harris, who I feel is a visionary leader. In the winter of last year, Dr. Harris and I met with stakeholders and leaders throughout District 200, as well as in the community, to develop a collaborative and innovative way to wrap services around students who are at the early childhood age and develop the skills for success for kindergarten and beyond. Well, there were many districts in DuPage County that went out for this grant, but District 200, in collaboration with the community agencies that we aligned ourselves to, actually were awarded the DuPage Community Foundation Grant Early Child Initiative. And one of the reasons why they said we were awarded that grant is our industry of success in District 200. In addition, we had the best data that we brought to the table, and I have to thank curriculum instruction, and specifically Julie O., who was phenomenal in making that happen for us. Now, with that collaboration, if you look at the two Board of Education goals, with staff development and communication relationships, this collaborative foundation does exactly that. They provide staff development for not only our staff in District 200, but as well as in community organizations. We do staff development for parents. And then for communication and relationships, we are now using the same assessments. We're using common language when we speak about students in order to provide wraparound services and support to our children in District 200. So we're thrilled about that. The last thing I'd like to mention is your fourth goal, which is integrated technology. And here at Jefferson, we use technology to help students explore, discover, communicate when they're learning the language, create, and expand their learning opportunities. We'd like to show you a small snapshot of some of the many things that we're doing here at Jefferson with technology.
Blue. Do you want more? You want to use a different color?
Red.
You want red? Okay, dark red.
Red.
Red, you did red. Can you try the black button? And color in black? Nice.
Okay.
Today is Wednesday.
It's still bright. Wait, can you tell me again what is today? It's Monday.
What is today is Thursday. Count it. One, two, ten. Here, count it. One, two, three, four, five. You did it! True! Counting out of them. Now we're going to play to the chart. You love it. What did you make? You make a snowberry? Can you say? Jeff, it's your turn.
Yeah, good job.
Good job. Can really bring you.
Two, three. It's a cherry. Large. High.
Blueberry. Good job, dear. What color? What color? It is so big! Look, if you can stand up your hands. Can I lift you up and stand as big as you? Whoa! Now let's see it. It's always going to bring it over here. Oh, no, it's always going to bring up the bug that we saw up there.
I want to see it.
Look, is it really good? Is that going to get paid for? Yeah, will it be fun? It will be so very exciting.
I love my boy.
Okay, well. Okay, so. First, we did the baking soda. Then we did the.
Cake.
And we did the.
I.
We took the, we did the I, we took the pictures, you know? You know what to do? That's the cool thing.
And here at Jefferson, we would like to invite you to come and see what we're doing, not only with technology, but here at Jefferson, anytime. So thank you.
So to be able to see what we do here at Jefferson, we appreciate a lot of our hearts. Next item on the agenda is recognition and achievements that we gave.
Thank you, Mrs. Inteheart. And this evening, we have a special recognition of one of our service clubs in the community. And it certainly was a community-wide effort. We were very fortunate to have a similar organization with the Wheat and Rotary Club leading this effort, providing needed supplies to many of our students in the district. Again, I remind the Board of the Community, we do have over 27% of our students who have reduced lunch, living in poverty by federal standards. And many of those children are obviously in our schools and our classrooms every day. And for those who are fortunate to have them, many are not. And so therefore, we really appreciate the generosity and the donations by some of our local businesses and the Wheat and Rotary Club. So this time, I want to turn it to Erica Loyac, our Director of Public Relations, and she will introduce our guest here this evening from the Wheat and Rotary.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. I have the great privilege of also serving as a member of the Wheat and Rotary Club. So I'm very excited to have my fellow Rotarians here with me tonight, and also Donna Kozak, who is the Department Chair of our Social Work Department, to talk a little bit about how this, our service club, the Wheat and Rotary, has fulfilled an important need in our community. And so I just want to thank you for the opportunity to serve on this board and for your encouragement for that. Because my serving on this board is not only personally fulfilling for me, but also allows us an opportunity to share the wonderful things that are going on in our schools, but also share about some of the needs that we have in our schools too, and connect our schools to important resources. So I'm going to let Donna talk a little bit about how the more than 500 fast packs the Wheat and Rotary stuffed in partnership with Wheat Chamber Businesses, why that fills such an important need. And then I will turn it over to my fellow Rotarians, Dr. Lori Feldman, who many of you will recognize as our Administrator in our district. Lori is the current President of Wheat and Rotary. And Joe Kottong is our immediate past President. He's not a doctor. Who's our immediate past President of the Wheat and Rotary.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, usually when school is starting for parents, it's a really exciting time to think about your children going off to school. But for those families who live at a poverty level, like Dr. Harris said, it can be a very stressful time when they don't have the money and the finances to buy the school supplies that are needed. And I can say this year that every single student in District 200, 100 for your generosity, was able to start the school year with the school supplies, a backpack, and the things they needed to academically start, get off to a good start. But also, I want to say socially and emotionally, it's a huge thing to be able to come to school with everything that you need to feel just like everybody else, and to have that brand spanking new backpack with those markers and supplies. And it's a great feeling for our kids to have that. And on behalf of the social workers in many of our schools that took two or three times the supplies, like Hubble, and Johnson, and Bauer, and Pleasant Hill, that really have a higher population of families that need, I can't thank you enough, and the social workers, and I hope Joanne and our whole Department of Special Services. It's amazing what you have done to put those things in our kids' hands. And I'm so grateful for your generosity. So thank you so much.
I understand this time. Farley, who are you fighting this time? Because you used to just get Marko and I all kinds of trouble. Who is it this time? And I'd really like to know that Mr. Rammer no longer gets the grades in the back, and he may even take a chair. So I want you to know, after two years, I gave him a hard time about that already today. It's nice to see all of you.
On behalf of the Wheat and New Rotary, Joe and I just wanted to say thank you for your support. Several of you came that night and helped us pack the bags. It certainly wasn't just a Rotary effort, you need to know that. And we had a lot of people who donated. Target provided, the Warrenville Target provided a tremendous amount of supplies, and I just met with them yesterday, and they're going to do it again for next year. And so we're thrilled about that. During Joe's presidency, he also did the backpack drive, and we presented, I think, somewhere around 1,200 or 1,300. And this year, we upped that to 1,700 this year. As you know, we gave 800 to the Humanitarian Service Project, which also serves DuPage County. So I know that some of our students were able to get them at that point. We had churches in Warrenville who also bought bags and 500 that we packed. I'm trying to think if I've got all my numbers. And so we really had a lot, and a lot of supplies. And then with the help of the Chamber of Commerce that we partnered with, they brought in money and supported us with $1,500 to also get supplies. And so we're going to continue to do that. Some of you attended our fundraiser at Christmas Inn. I know Dr. Rammer comes and helps us with that. And I know Rosemary's attended as well. And we raised $60,000 at that one event that we have this year. We signed to doing the backpacks. We raised about $2300 for backpacks, but we raised $60,000 and also bought a car for Midwest Humble Shelters. So I hope you saw that and gave them service. But really, as a former educator, I can say that now, well, not really, I'm still teaching. But anyhow, how much money do y'all spend individually for school supplies out of pocket every year? A lot. Kids just come to school with a lot of needs, and your staff is a tremendous staff, and they spend a lot of money out of pocket to help those kids make sure they have everything. So we're just glad 45 of our members, we really care about kids, we're there as a community service organization. We like to help them serve and bring whatever we can to the table. I'm glad to know that all the kids were helped, and that kind of surprised us because we didn't think we could get that done. But we'll continue to serve if there's other projects you need. I hope you'll call on us, you should know who I am and where I'm at, because I'm a Warrenville girl. Me and Andy, so anyhow, thank you so much, and I appreciate that you've brought us here tonight, and I appreciate it. I'll just turn it over to Joe.
I guess I come here as a father. I have one of these strange biblical families. I have a 29-year-old, a 26-year-old, and an eight-year-old. And the eight-year-old was there packing the bags. And so from my experience, I can tell you how expensive it is to pack the backpacks and give kids supplies. What I didn't know, and what I thank you for my continued education, is the difference in what is expected by my kids and what is needed by his other kids. It is moving. And I want to thank everybody for that, because it really was an experience for me that I'll never forget. And we have a long history with the Board here, and you know, with the school systems. We built handicap playgrounds. So Wheat and Rotary is very dedicated and very proud of our school system. So anything we can do in the future, just let us know. Thank you.
Again, on behalf of all of the students, staff, and community members, thank you to the Wheat and Rotary Club for your contribution, and you made a lot of happy kids on day one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any modifications to the agenda for the members who should make? Hearing that, hopefully see public comments on agenda items. Chris Crabtree? Come on, I have to read my case. I'm sorry to read this, people, public comments.
Okay.
But the opportunity to speak to the Board is provided for members of the public that have a question or comment on an agenda item. The Board appreciates members and stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. The Board strives to make very best decisions for the district and public, and under all the avenues is very helpful. The Board must protect the stability and decor of its new, so please be respectful for the duties of the Board, the democratic process, and your comments today. Please use the microphone, state your name, address, and address your comments to the Board. Limit your comments to three minutes, and be factual and courteous to that. Please state whether you're personally disrespectful or trying to send any comments to members of the Board or staff. If you feel your matter needs to be discussed in more detail, please attend the Board's chest chair or present your comments to us. Okay, Mrs. Crabtree.
Hi, I'm Chris Crabtree, 01617, Brandon, Winfield. I have the pleasure and honor this year of serving as your Wheat and Warrenville PTA Council President. And I'm here tonight for two reasons. One, I'd like to educate the public on truly what the PTA does. And number two, I'd like to give a shout out to all the PTAs for the contributions that they have made in the past year. If you look at your agenda this evening, you will see that last year, $125,000 approximately was donated in capital expenditures from PTAs. Those are not even all of the PTAs. A few people told me today they still need to get their letters in. So there's even more to come. I noticed that the boosters, which I'm now a member of since I have a high schooler, also donated roughly about the same amount of money. We're looking at about $250,000 in capital expenditures from parents within our district. That does not even include approximately $180,000 to $200,000 a year that we average for donating money for authors, field trips, assemblies, those clubs we sponsor, music organizations. We donate quite a bit of money, and if we were to even start tracking on manpower that we provide, it's well over half a million dollars a year that the parent organizations give back to our schools. Also, I would like to just tell a little bit about what PTA does above and beyond that. You know, somebody once said to me, "Oh, PTA, those are the people who bake cupcakes." Well, yeah, we do that. But we're so much more than that. We take classes, we act as mentors throughout the region. We're very active with other units, Neveerville, Glen Allen, and Carroll Street. We also serve on building committees, district task forces, lots and lots of man-hours are spent. And those efforts are all for the children within our district. That is our main goal. We're all volunteers, and that's what we give our time for that. To have this kind of success, though, is a team effort. It's not just the parents, the moms, the dads, the grandparents. It's working with the teachers, and the staff, and the administrators, and the community. And it's all of us working together. And I wanted to share something, because one thing that PTA truly doesn't do is we don't pat ourselves on the back. In April, Wheat and Warrenville PTA Council was awarded the top honor in the state. We were given Outstanding Council in the state of Illinois, of all the different councils. And that truly is a collective effort. It's not just the council. And the council represents the 18 buildings that have PTAs. It's all of our efforts together. And I just wanted to make sure that I shared that with you and say, we appreciate what you do, and we'd like to sponsor with you and do the best for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. This is superintendent's report, I do this.
Thank you, Mrs. Inteheart, and good evening, Board members. A few items this evening I want to update the Board and the community on. The first is the obvious, since we last met, school open. And anytime a large activity goes like that in a community, there's lots of new information, lots of new activities going on. And I created a top 10 list that I'm going to share here this evening with some data points, as I call them. This is also going to be put in the column that I submit to the local media, so you're getting a preview of that here this evening. The top 10 fast facts about District 200 as we open the school year. First of all, over the last five years, we have graduated AP National Merit Semifinals. Last year, 1,053 students took advanced placement courses at our high school. Over the past three years, our two high schools have increased in participation in AP classes, thus earning the district the College Board's AP Honorable Certificate, as I know the Board is aware of. Certainly, that is very, very significant, and we will continue that into this year's flow. Third, we have 15 all-day kindergarten classrooms this year. Three years ago, we had none. And so therefore, this initiative has continued to grow and across the district due to the high demand of parents. English language learners continue to be a growing population in our district, as the Board members are well aware. We have 1,100 English language learners who speak 67 different languages attending our schools today. Pretty significant. And as Stephanie mentioned here this evening with Jefferson, it's so important that a district facility like this, an early childhood center, having those qualifications with staff to work with all of our district children, it's very, very important. Number five, District 200 employs approximately 1,650 employees, with 1,100 of those being certified teachers. Obviously, we are the largest employer in the community. We have 85 new teachers this school year, 85 new people, through retirements and through attrition. Enrollment at the start of this year, on the sixth day, was 13,396 students. Pretty stable, pretty consistent to where we were a year ago right now, which is exactly what our starter report indicated to us last spring when we received that information. Number eight, pending Board approval, our district budget will be $153 million in operating expenses and 85% of and eighty-five percent of that budget will be used for district operating expenses dedicated to the education. Number nine, we run 477 bus routes every day. Every day, 477 routes in the district. As board members know, we tripled our buses. We have a lot of buses running on our streets in the community. And finally, District 200 serves students in Wheaton, Warrenville, portions of Carroll Street and Winfield and West Chicago for a total of 25.67 square miles in our district. That's why we do 477 bus routes every day. Very large geographic area and I think it's important for the community to remember that. We are a large organization, a very successful organization. So those are some of the facts that pulled from some of the data as we begin the school year. You know, sometimes you try to point out certain individual things, but I thought it was nice to put all in one thing. You have a copy of that information in your green folder and certainly feel free to share that with people in the community as you have the opportunity. One of those items I want to elaborate a little bit more on at the beginning of the school year, and that is the 477 bus routes. As the board is aware, this year we switched transportation vendors. And with a new vendor, there's always some challenges when you transition. There's every year, there's some challenges. But this year, when you change vendors, there are some. I can assure you that for the past two and a half weeks, district staff, including Mr. Farley and his staff, Mrs. Monocless and her staff, have been working around the clock to try and rectify many of these issues. Most of them were resolved during the first few days, especially our regular transportation routes. We did have several challenges with some of our special education routes. And I don't know if board members are somewhat aware of that. As of today and tomorrow morning, I believe the final issue has been resolved where we had a route that was still arriving late. And obviously, when we take away instruction time, that's not appropriate. So we do have a solution to that that's going to start tomorrow morning at one of our schools. So we believe all of those issues have now been resolved. And one of the points to clarify during a transition like that is, with that many bus routes, the bus company usually hires most of the previous drivers from the other company. However, I believe it was about seventy percent that drivers from last year were hired by the new company. So when you have a thirty percent changeout, you've got challenges. And sometimes you put the kids in those unique situations as well as some of the drivers not being familiar with our streets and the community and some of the kids. So now, two and a half weeks into the school year, we do feel very comfortable that most of those issues have been resolved. I do recognize there was some conveniences with some of the parents early on and some of the kids, but we did work hard with our provider to get all of those resolved. Any questions about the starting of school before I jump into a couple of other things? Any comments or questions? Okay, if none, I do have a couple of curriculum updates I want to inform the board about. You do have two documents in your green folders as well. And I'm going to turn over to Dave Dogg with our Assistant Superintendent for Educational Services. And she's going to talk about virtual learning and where we're at on that front, as well as our choice SES provision under the No Child Left Behind law. Turn over to Dave.
Thank you. I'm going to talk first about an exciting opportunity that we have. We've done some very exciting work on an aggressive timeline to bring online blended learning to District 200. I've been lucky enough to be meeting with four other districts, Virginia, Naperville 203, Naperville, Imperial 204, and Keenwood. We've spent quite a few hours figuring out how we would need to tackle the many exciting opportunities, but also some obstacles on how we would bring blended learning into the district. We've also been meeting with the WODPA and they're very supportive of this as well. And when I talk about blended learning, we aren't talking about having teachers replaced by computers. We're still talking about having teachers facilitate that learning, but bringing in a lot of opportunities through technology and through digital tools to enhance that learning. So we're looking at ways to not only improve what we're already doing, but also to expand the course opportunities that we've had. For example, it is hard to find teachers on Mandarin. However, if you pooled our resources and worked with other districts, you could find a teacher and have a lot of students participate in a class like that digitally and share not only staff resources, money and resources, and just how we will all do this. We have a really aggressive timeline that we've all agreed to. We would like to have course offerings by that time in the school year or early. And we're going to be spending quite a bit of time on that. We have decided to build an education group called Everbrief that has had quite a bit of experience of pooling the districts together to work on this. They've worked in many different states. And they do a lot of work with some of the curriculum providers and the digital learning providers as well to give us some guidance on how that could work. So we've begun, we started that. I have a five-hour meeting next week that we're going to continue on working on this. It is a really aggressive timeline, but we think it's really the best resource of our students and also future by district.
One other quick comment on that topic is we will be bringing an intergovernmental agreement where it will be a co-op with those other districts. We are working on that right now. So that will be something we will be asking the board to approve as we move forward to begin this cooperation with those districts. And we're looking forward to traveling this journey together with our colleagues in the other communities. One of the things Charter School Experience provided for us this past year was an opportunity to work collaboratively with our like districts and come up with a solution that legally is better, cheaper, and more appropriate for the kids in District 200. So unless there's any other questions, okay.
The second topic that I wanted to surprise you of is called supplemental educational services. Sometimes it refers to SES. And through the No Child Left Behind legislation, remember at a Friday meeting I talked about choice offerings? For some of our schools that had already offered choice, the next rung of consequences for No Child Left Behind is the offering of supplemental educational services. And we have two elementary schools, Johnson and Hawthorne, that will be required to offer those services. Since you have a draft of a letter, it is currently in the process of being approved through the state. It does go home to all of our students that are on free and reduced lunch at both of those schools to offer free tutoring programs. The tutoring program that parents choose from are state-provided tutoring services. And we have to set aside twenty percent of our Title I money for the transportation of choice students and also the supplemental educational services. So we'll be sending this letter home and then we'll be providing a service provider fair and contacting all of the service providers within the state. And the parents will have a choice of which of these service providers, if any, they want to participate. The timeline is to go through that. We have a provider fair in October, getting that set up by November. The state doesn't have final budget allocations on that, so that's why the timeline is a little later than what we would like. And we will be starting up the tutoring services at both of those schools. Are there any questions?
I see in the letter here that there's an income requirement for the payment. And is there an educational component as well? Does a child need to be one of those students who has not yet received a state standard exam test? The federal guidelines?
Ah, there it is. The federal guidelines require that the only requirement will be that the students are on free and reduced lunch. However, in many other districts, and this probably won't be against District 200, but in many other districts where you would have multiple schools or ten or eleven schools that are on the SES provider, then you may have more students wanting to participate than there is money for. And if that happens, then you limit it to those students that have a lower eating or amount and are also on free and reduced lunch. But the first rung is everybody that is on free and reduced lunch, regardless of their academic achievement, has access to this. So it will depend on how many students you have that are interested. But because we only have two elementary schools and you have to allocate twenty percent of our Title I funding score list, I do not foresee that it will be turning away students from the service. Thank you.
Title I, remember, board members, is based on our poverty level. So we receive funding based on a ratio based on how many kids we get up in the year. So that's why those funds are dictated for that.
Just two quick questions. Do we get any say-so on these providers and are we happy with those choices? And then secondly, is the twenty percent that we have to put aside, does that fully cover our obligation there? Or do we have additional that we have to put in?
Two very good questions. No, we do not have any say in service providers. We have to offer it to all that are state-approved. We are not allowed to make recommendations to parents on a specific service provider that we deem more appropriate than others. I worked through this in another district and there are some service providers that, in my opinion, are far better than others. But we're not allowed to give that opinion to parents. That is part of the rules and regulations of No Child Left Behind and of SES. Your second question, if you can remind me.
Does the twenty percent cover our entire obligation?
Well, the twenty percent does at the cost of the mailings, it does do best. But if you can imagine the man-hours that are needed not only to get this all ready to go out, but to also answer and field questions. And then we'll be housing this at the schools. And the questions and the burden on the school principals to do this is quite immense. I've been through this process before. And also with this, we will be required to have individualized education plans set up by each of these providers for each of the students. And a school personnel member is required to be there. That usually falls upon the principal. So you can imagine that if you had a hundred students participate, how much administrative time that would take up. And yes, there's not a dollar figure that you put on that, but it certainly impacts our business.
Do we have translators and these have to parents? Especially for some of the children.
Yes, these letters are in the process of being translated. And then we are having evening sessions with interpreters there to help out. And then some of the service providers from the state are quietly going and will be offering and talking about their services. I know it's not just.
No other questions on the curriculum? We will keep board members updated on both of those topics as we move forward. You do have copies of some information there, so certainly if you have any questions, please let me know or this is dogged, so we can have an answer. The last item this evening, and I could not pass the opportunity to talk a little bit about Patriot Day today. Mrs. Intihar, thank you for having the moment of silence at the opening of the meeting. I remember very well, twelve years ago today, it was a very difficult, challenging time in the country, in the community. At the time, I was a middle school principal. I remember it well. It was a very challenging day and then several weeks and months after that as well. All of our flags today were hung at half-mast. If you were by any of the schools, you probably saw that. I know that in our buildings today, in our classrooms, teachers were taking opportunity to educate. It's one of those historical moments that you always remember where you were when one of these things, these events, these unfortunate events happened. You know, I was thinking about this today. Our seniors in high school that are in our schools today were in first grade when this happened. So we have a whole school full of kids that have not experienced that event. And even our oldest students in the district, you know, were very young at the time. I'm sure they probably remember somebody because I know that I was going on to my house at that time. Everybody sitting around with a television at night trying to comprehend what happened. So it is a teachable moment. It continues to be a teachable moment. And we certainly, you know, recognize and appreciate this National Day of Service recognition for all of our first responders that we rely upon in this community every day. And it is a day to always remember, you know, for the well-being of all of our communities and our country. So on that note, that concludes superintendent's report.
Thank you, Deputy Mary. Next, we move on to our consent agenda. And there are several items on our consent agenda. First, acceptance of gifts, as you heard earlier, from the PTAs and the boosters clubs. Acceptance of a gift to Pleasantville School. Acceptance of a gift to Memorial Middle School. Approval to post the donation of Board Policy 2.190, the list for receiving board material. Approval of materials for high school freshmen in Southmore English Level 1, English I Level. Approval of caper maintenance agreement. Approval of building permit for Wheaton Warren High School future project. Approval of annual lender contracts generating revenue. Approval of bills payable and payable. Approval of minutes, August 14, 2013, open. Approval to store recordings of closed meetings. Recording of closed sessions prior to April 10th. Approval of personnel boards to include employment, resignation, and retirement in the absence of administrative certified classified non-union staff. Are there any items board members wish to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve, to vote on the consent agenda? By Mr. Roman?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Paulson. Are there any comments, any discussion?
I'm just going to follow Mr. Kneecars. But this is something called the Kneecar moment. I guess it is. But just to say thank you for all of the gifts that we received. And in regards particularly to the PTA ones, back many, many years ago when I was PTA president, I figured out how much it actually costs parents and community members. You know, this is the result of profit from fundraisers. And most of those fundraisers involve selling things from which they make some profit. And I believe way back at that time, it was about three dollars for every dollar raised. So if the all-in total issue saying was half a million dollars when you get done looking at everything, it's well over a million and a half dollars spent by our community largely. And parents in particular very often on those pizzas and magazines subscriptions and that and such. So something worth noting.
Any other comments? I just had one and again, I just want to remind you, community, that the future project that we're getting a building permit for tonight was donated by several parents and community members in the newer communities. So thank you again for that. I'm just so happy that's going forward. And we're still using this list for quite some time. And they sent it to the plate and are going to start it from that. So thank you again for that. And I want the community to again recognize that's what's really good stuff. If there are no other comments, may we leave the board?
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Giambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Packhill?
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar?
Yes.
You're welcome, yes. Do you want this intent to move to the category of the number item?
I'm just going to go to the other.
I'm sorry? I'm sorry?
I'm just going to go ahead.
Okay, everybody follow my time a little bit now.
I mean, no, he's hard, yes. He's not. Mr. Giambiani's vote is not shown up yet. His name is.
Yeah, but we bar him. But.
Yes, no, we're saying, yes.
His name is not highlighted, no.
So is there anything on this?
This is empty.
All right, we'll fix that glitch a little bit later. Mr. Giambiani, you know, we're yes vote. So we'll get that taken care of. All right. We have no action items tonight, but we do have a discussion item, and that is the 2013-2014 budget. This is the second, really the second step in our three-step process. There were several iterations of the budget that was presented to us. And now this is our opportunity for discussion. And then our good set will be a vote, which will occur at the 10th of today. So tonight is our opportunity to hear some latest updates to what the budget might require, because we're always discussing these aspects. So, Dr. Harris.
Thank you. Just, we do have a few updates here this evening from Mr. Farley and myself. And as you know, tentative budgets are tentative until the board does approve it. Since the last time we met, we do have a few minor changes on the revenue side, and also some adjustments on the expenditure side. So I'm going to turn over to Mr. Farley. I'll let him update the board where we sit as of today.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Back when the budget was under the July, one of the items I discussed in detail was corporate personal property replacement tax. And the fact that in the prior budget year, we thought it might do largely in part to be capable surprise and maybe some improvement to be some tax obligations in the prior calendar year. So that item, my item, I reduced it to some degree because I had some concern because of having it on the downward trend. And having your report, I guess, wrong. We just recently got the estimates from the state on what our corporate personal property replacement taxes are going to be seeing an increase over what was in the 2013-14 budget. So we'll be making a change. I should mention that all these items will also be discussed in the finance committee, which is coming up next week to get us to move forward to finalize the budget. So we did see a nice increase in corporate personal property replacement tax. As Dr. Harris mentioned, we're also going to take that opportunity to also make some expense modifications to the budget as well. And we will bring support for final approval once it's done with finance. Those being in the area of salaries. We are, some of these expenditure items are going to be in the area of technology. We are going to add some budget for a technology position. We're also going to put some money in for our teaching staff in the area of special ed. We're also going to put in some money into special education as well. And then we are going to be putting a lot of money into technology that we'll look forward to possibly using in the spring. And we're, Dr. Harris, I work with the command on that as well, for some possible capovers to relate to technology. So technology will see, definitely sees a lot of improvement. I know this is a board goal, and I have it supported the board. So we are going to be propping up technology, both with salary as well as equipment. And that budget line item, as well as salary for other staff and some of the special development.
Some of the specifics on this, the corporate personal property replacement tax, the increase in the revenue side that we have received from the state, is approximately $525,000. So it's lower than a half million dollars. So pretty significant. It really gives us an opportunity here to shore up a couple items and then provides an opportunity for us in some other areas. As Mr. Farley said, we, our tuition line item, that special education tuition for some of our outplacement students is higher than expected. And we do need to add a certain amount there. We estimate that to be about $150,000 additional. The salary and benefits, we are looking to add approximately $175,000 there to make sure we've got enough in those salary and benefit accounts to make sure we've covered some additional staffing needs that we realize in one of those is that additional technology person to be able to provide additional support across the district. And finally, the balance of that, that is approximately $200,000, is what we will be putting in the capital line items of our technology budget. We want to work with staff at our buildings. I anticipate that being the high school level, where we will look to integrate more handheld digital and wireless devices in the classrooms. But we want to work with staff before we make those decisions. And I got an idea. I know both Mr. Playbo and Mr. Paul have a list. So we want to work with them and other staff to make sure we make the right decisions and incorporate that into the instructional environment at this level. So that's what we anticipate today. We certainly can have more discussion about that in the finance committee and show the exact numbers in detail on why, you know, we believe those are the places to place the additional revenue. And so therefore, that's some of the detail behind that. And certainly, I'm willing to hear your input from more members on those decisions of our agreement. Any questions about, I do have one other item to share. Any questions about that?
Just. The increase that we're seeing in the corporate personal property replacement tax, is that going to be an increase that we see? Are you going to see that next single month of the year? Or does it swing wildly?
It didn't swing. That's why I was a little bit reticent about the number this year and reduced it. We anticipated a reduction in the prior year. It came in more. I wasn't sure of the April impact. And I spoke to that when we posted it in July. I really was concerned that, you know, that there could be a swing. So it's not something you can count on every year, but it's definitely something to monitor. They usually don't release the estimates until middle of August. So we just recently got that information. And obviously, it's good news for this year. But again, we have to take it every year and be cautious with that. One other point, just for the board, know, knows we do like this initial revenue expenditure. The budget is still balanced as it has been now for the straight here. The, well, actually, maybe we could show a small surplus in this operating budget for this year in our operating fund. So again, that helps to build some fund balance, which we've done the last three years. I'm not going to jump ahead on the audit presentation, but that'll come in November. There's some good news in that as well. So again, credit to the board for work the last four years on the balance budget and building fund balance through the policy that the finance committee put forth.
As board members know, the state funding is, you know, many times a guess. And Bill does a great job estimating that. It's always good to estimate low and come in high, especially when you're trying to guess on revenues. And that's where we've been doing over the last several years. And we're in a good position. But we have been purpose, so that's why we feel comfortable putting this into our budget.
And I think it's wise that not all of this money is used towards staff. Because then if it doesn't recruit, you know, you don't get to lay people off and stuff like that. So I'm very glad to hear that, you know, we're going to spend, what we need to spend in terms of salary, we're not going to overstay ourselves. And we get to lay people off. It's very important.
Even the tuition line item varies from year to year, too. So that's another one that, you know, we kind of monitor as well. So really, we're not spending a large portion of it. Did we receive any other comments from the public outside of this hearing? You know, any other information concerns?
Not to my knowledge. Not, or maybe just probably. We have not. We do post the budget online at the administration building as well as all the libraries. We call all the libraries. There's a form that we created. I don't know if you can allow, I think it's a response that I did. That we put in the end of budget document at all the libraries. And then we call all the libraries for a board to come out and say as well.
One other quick item. I've had some conversations with a couple of board members. I put together a document here. I wanted to target board goals over some questions I've had individually. And so if you can take a look at this item here, I just want to point out a couple of things. Took the board goals and the corresponding superintendent goals and indicated here where we have made some budget adjustments. In other words, where we have allocated some additional revenue to help us meet this particular target. And these would be additional, you know, additions to the previous year's budget. One thing I want to comment on, we do reallocate resources. So sometimes we make decisions whether it be in staffing or materials and supplies or purchase services to get toward these goals, too. And I don't have that indicated here. But I do have some very specifics in regard to increases in allocations in particular line items. The first one, board has a goal to increase in learning in 20% of skills. As you can see, there are additional $250,000 in the technology budget, which we just explained. There's not only staffing, but also primarily equipment. The second goal, there is an additional $50,000 targeted toward leadership and professional development of leadership. And I know the board has targeted that last year. We're moving forward with this year. And we have put that in as a line item for our administrative staff in the professional development arena. This district goal, and board goal three, we have added an additional $50,000 for the community engagement process. Again, a very large board goal that we are beginning to move forward with. We have allocated it there. I think, assuming that the board will look to spend some additional dollars to facilitate a community process. I know we'll have more information on that later this evening and next board meetings. And then finally, one board goal that is always there, that's the balanced budget built fund balance. If you remember from the budget presentation, we have $135,000 for good. And we will be looking to, little by little, continue to increase our fund balance until we are at a comfortable point moving forward. So I just wanted to point those out very specific here in detail. And if you have any further questions about that, we can certainly talk about it. But I want to point out, we are doing other things, too, with reallocation of services within budgets, not only additions to try and do this.
Thank you for this, because I think we wanted to cancel the thing. And I think that this is irregible and corrected. And when I was thinking about the budget, you know, this is best we can, next board meeting, you know, technology is just such a concern of all of ours. But I just, like, how can we get ahead? How can we be advanced and put an edge? And that's what the industry, that's what's, you know, going to make a difference for our kids. So just if you allocated, you know, this extra money, the general money for technology, and the, you know, how can these skills appear, there are places still conflict. But I'm sure what the community is saying, you know, somehow partly, somebody wants to, you know, give us resources, that would be, you know, what we really would be making a goal. But thank you for identifying these things and for targeting technology.
I just wanted to say thank you as well for putting it together this way, because so much to get the budget and see all of those different, you know, object codes and all of that. But I think that looking at it this way is more of a balcony level perspective that boards are supposed to do. And so I think that this is very helpful. And maybe at some point, I would like to hear some comments about how this technology budget, in terms of reliability of our technology. Last year, that was the big bug. So I can understand the devices, maybe all of that. But is there something within here, a component within here, that will also help the reliability aspect?
I'll just comment briefly on that. And certainly, it's more detailed than this. One is to be able to have enough staff to help support the devices and the increased usage and so on. If we don't have, you know, a staffing level that's appropriate, and that's indicated here, and reallocating some resources. And it's not just adding a technician. At our high school level and also at the district office, we've also reallocated some staff. We have an LLC director, one of our high schools retired this past year. But we didn't just backfill that spot. We hired a technology integrating specialist at South. North had already done that the year before through retirement, through attrition. So now both high schools have a dedicated staff person for the professional development purposes. We also took that opportunity at the district office and the educational services department, and Faith hired a new integrated tech specialist to work with our K8 staff in particular, also in cooperation with our two high school staff members who are going to be working with that level as well. So it's more, you know, that reliability piece is also relying that our staff is properly trained in the classroom, okay? Many times, it may not be, it's a professional development issue, not necessarily an equipment issue. Does that make sense? The other thing is, you know, part of the capital expenses, which we'll have to work with our IT staff on, is to have a fail-safe electricity situation at where our main servers are. For instance, currently, when the power goes off at the district office, it affects the servers across the entire district. We have no control to come in or of other nature. So when that happens, we're, we have to, you know, wait till the power comes on and reset everything. And it certainly, depending on the time of day, it has an impact on what's going on. So that's where that reliability factor comes in. That's another capital expense, pretty significant one. We also have to make sure those locations where our main equipment is on the backbone and in the network, that they're cooled appropriately. Because we do get heat, overheating issues especially this time of year. To make sure, so all those things play into reliability on the way on the professional development side, but also on the equipment side. So we're looking at the whole picture here as we move forward. Does that make sense?
Any other questions or discussion? I think we could go around the table and get a sense of where everyone, you know, how everybody feels on the budget, whether or not they're comfortable with what's been presented. You know, given that we have a vote, really, this is our last time to have a fairly immediate discussion on the budget.
Well, you see, I'm very comfortable with the way the budget process has developed here. Very pleased that we identified additional $525,000 in revenue from the corporate placement property debt. And it's a wonderful pressure that we've identified and whether we've identified that the front debt will go to including our technology or against our technology. I'm pleased for us, so far, with the staff for our technology program. This is the third year, beginning of the third year of our technology plan. And this is one of the resources to see where liability is taking into place. And things when you're up to speed as well in the patient, we're going to go on the first few years. And getting a sense of that in back over experience. And yet, we're so focused on improving, I would make sure it's something that's enhanced throughout the school year. So I'm very impressed by that. You know, all in all, I think very decent budget in the fact that this is maybe a quarter year that we've done a budget that's a lot in itself. We have part of the budget for both of its community completion process which will be reported by the council. Paulson, for the data, this is really something that's not going to settle. So thanks for having me.
I agree. I'm very comfortable with it. I went through it very well in detail. I try to understand it the first time. But I think, I think that my first view, I'm very comfortable with it. Really good to see the basic investment. Makes it, you know, there are critical areas to talk about technology, his engagement, professional development. So it's good for me to see that, you know, happen. We're just not saying where we are for anything. It's not, we're making a best in an area for where we know where to go in the future. So I'm very comfortable with the changes we made, additional revenue possibility, and it powers through the investment process according to what we expect.
Absolutely. Balanced budget is number one. And it's probably back to the job of putting that together. I guess tonight, I'll turn about, looking more at our solites, too. It's a little warm in here. And there has been. And there has been, you can keep it, some attention. But yes, I'm very comfortable with it.
Yeah, most of the questions I had were answered at the previous meeting. And including, including staff, with the revelation of this $500,000 appearing on the top line and is afforded us some focus on the areas that are clearly paramount in what we're trying to achieve relative to technology. So I'm comfortable with it, as I mentioned, most of my concerns or questions were answered in previous discussion.
And just to make a handoff, I'm comfortable with the budget as well. And, you know, as I mentioned last meeting, this is the first year that I've been on the board that I can remember us having a significant amount of money that seemed flexible to. You know, it seemed in previous years, we were more or less working to just support the programs we had in place and make sure we didn't have to reduce. And this is the first time where it feels like we have the luxury of having some choices. Maybe not huge ones, but at least some choices. And that's a good thing, but then it's also more responsibility. And that's why I appreciate this being put forward, to just make sure that we're clear about what those choices are in the community. So I think this is a great format. And I'm hoping we're going to continue to be able to make choices in future years. So I hope we continue to need this kind of a format.
And I'm very comfortable with what you put together. Thank you for doing such a very good throw down and answering everybody's questions. I do want to reinforce, you know, to the, really to the board's community that this is predicated on a levy, obviously, and the levy is local tax hours. And it's predicated on a levy that will be right around the CPI. But it would look higher, as I understand it, because we'll try to capture all the new growth. Would you like to comment on that, Eric, or Ben, please?
Sure, as the board is aware, every November we file a levy, we are under tax caps. So we are limited to CPI of 5%, which others lower. Always been the CPI, the CPI for this levy coming up is 1.7%. So we're looking to try to have them out, plus any new growth. As the board is aware, new growth has been with the economy, what's going on, has been very limited. Although we are starting, you know, the Mariano's is being built and will be on tax code soon. There's 45 homes going up on County Farm Code, that comes with new growth. We've been working with our local municipalities, trying to, certainly including the Warrenville tip, which ended early. And we should keep some recently, not with Carroll Street, we talked about the tip that's dominating up north. I mean, that one four or five years early. So there are ways to capture some of that off there. But the budget does take into account taxes, even the 1.7% CPI that's supported as well, so is the tax catch, which is obviously the global taxes, so you're absolutely correct.
Is there any other discussion on the budget? Oh, Mr. President?
I'm sorry, one more item I wanted to mention on the form that the budget is filed every year with the state of Illinois. The board sees that, that's the document that we'll bring to you for final approval and send off to the state board of education. There is a line on there for on behalf payments, payments of pension that the T R S has made, makes on our behalf. Historically, we have not put that number in there. It's, a lot of districts do it, a lot of districts don't. It's always picked up on our audit, given the nature of what's going on with T R S and pensions. We will start including that. For example, if you know our benchmark districts, half of us do it, half of us don't. 203, 204, results do not. It does alter what your budget looks overall, but it will look like dollars because it does go on cloud for your total operating budget. So it increases it by that amount that we will be including it this year. Just as an FYI, we can see the final document and run that through guidance as well.
That particular revenue item, we never see it. The money never comes to us, never hits our accounts, it's on behalf. So just so that we're clear on that. That's why it's picked up in the audit, it has been for year after year after year. But it is not, you know, actual revenue we receive and expenditures we do. But since there has been a lot of discussion on pension obligations and what we're paying for pensions, it is something we will include in that budget document. And we will define more about it in the following committee and have more discussion about it there.
If I understand though, that the impact that it have for the casual observer of the budget, since 100% of the T R S money is a benefit, it would increase the percentage of our operating fund that goes to wages for benefits. Because right now it's at 3% or 4%. If it's 100% of the money, that's an increase in percentage, but really it's no different than prior to years.
That's correct. It tends to skew budgets, which is why districts have chosen to do it or not do it. What you see is mostly the larger districts don't do it, you know, Harper'sville 300 doesn't do it. I, you know, I kind of surveyed to see who's doing it and have been doing it since 10 or 15. So, but I think given what's going on with pension, we need to put it there.
Okay, are there any other questions or discussion on this? All right, that one we want. No written reports, monthly financial reports, and employee reports. Are you board members having questions on those? Okay, now reports from board members, are there any board committee reports?
Yeah, community engagement committee does have a report that's called the March Responsibility Divided Report to the Board. We had a first meeting on August 27th. We discussed kind of a process, scope, for people making the community engagement effort here. Tomorrow afternoon, we're meeting and hearing two proposals from two consulting firms that focus work in this area of community engagement. Echo, which is using Coro, and we want a community survey of potential issues related to possible checkups in that environment. And Omni, which has counseled a number of districts within our area, including 203, St. Charles.
It's Unicam. Unicam, say it right.
Yeah, Unicam. About community engagement process, we're conducting one right now, so we did one of 203. So we'll hear those two presentations tomorrow. I think timeline is that we hope to present to the board a proposal to accept one of these bids from one of these consultants by Christian in October, so that we can begin this process, get a warrant, so that we can actually start getting community engagement meetings on Sunday. And we'll be making efforts, reach out with the participants that come in and help us coordinate this along with consulting. Firstly, we'll be talking, I know all of us are mentioning about trying to increase the transparency of the board of the community. And I have to add one that is not, I'm not sure the committee did. I was fortunate that when I got elected onto the board, at that time, we had a public relations director hired, Erica Lozano, who's done a tremendous job of relating to the community. But this is another effort, I think, on part, to engage the community, to hear from the community, and have it to communicate here at the process. I just hope and pray that we'll get some really active involvement from the community, this community engagement effort. As we review things such as finance for the community, such as facilities, such as curriculum, a whole array of things that we're responsible for, we want to have discussions with the community and hear from the community on that, so we can formulate plans. And as Mr. Paulson pointed out, we haven't met the first time. We hope that this initial effort will end by April May, so we can have a final report to the board by the end of the school year. But that final report will not necessarily end the community engagement process. We may have other issues or questions or topics that may have ongoing community engagement after that. And I encourage by that opportunity as well. So in terms of some of my personal observations about the process and community, but I'm not going to suppose.
Thank you, that was a great overview. I've had the opportunity to personally be involved in several of these community engagement efforts. So I think the process of community divisions is going to be very successful. I think there's a couple of keys. I think getting outside facilitator that we're going to be talking about tomorrow is going to be very critical. I mean, certain folks have been through this process before. It is a lot of effort, especially with the number of board goals we have, the number of super technicals, someone to focus on education and finance, I think it's critical. And that's important to help facilitate the process. I've seen it done successfully, very successfully with that. So I'm very positive about having this interview process tomorrow. The other thing that I think is critical is that our citizens are not only active participants in attending and giving feedback, but also leading the process. We have initial discussions about having a citizens-based committee, a committee of people who are proudly to face at this process, etc. It's a process which heavily engages the community. And at the end of this process, the citizens committee, which would have the name of Fund A, will actually make a recommendation to the board of what they've heard from the community. So it's not really a board activity as much as a gathering of input and feedback and priorities and what community values, what student achievement, how they define student success, what they want out of the building to the finances. So I think we're setting up for a very successful process. I know there's a lot of momentum from some of the people that I've talked to, both before the election as well as subsequently. So I look forward to bringing that back with the committee in the next moment.
Thank you very much. I think we've got two great choices in the Mr. Roman and Representative Bora's committee. It's, it sounds like you really have got a call that I have to get my staff for. So thank you so much, everyone's going to be a lot of time in the process. Are there any other board committee reports? All right, any other board reports?
Just a couple of things from I S D. As our calendars are filling up fast, you might want to just hold a spot. October 29th is the Education Division Dinner. It's going to be technology related, so it's very, you know, applicable to us. You can see that's the only mistake about it. So we should have all gotten reminders of it, but put it on the calendar, is what I'm saying. Second thing is, this is the 100th anniversary of I S D. And so one of the things they want to do at the conference is have video screens from all of the local boards. And there is a suggestion on the website, I guess Chicago will be doing it. So they would like to have local board members saying hi and congratulations. So maybe that would be something that Dr. Harris, you could delegate to, I'm not on the.
That's news to me. Thank you. I've got two things to share. One, I had the opportunity to attend the Edison Middle School curriculum event on August 26th. I actually walked in more excited than even, and I started going in, which was different for me. Couple of different things that stood out that got really excited about. First, I heard about pilot program in my daughter's English and Arts class, where students are going to be encouraged to bring their own devices, take more responsibility for their own activities, collaborate, very exciting. It's a unique pilot program in the district. The second thing I heard was from a math teacher about using Khan Academy, which is a kind of the first online learning tool that's been out there. She talked about flipping classrooms. So very excited that in this era of the kind of core student achievements, that our teachers still have the flexibility to take the opportunity to explore small-term approaches. I hope to hear more about that in other schools across the district. The second thing is kind of a full disclosure, transparency thing. Do you have a government agreement in our district that we sign for the work at Monroe Middle School? My firm has been invited to start qualifications to be an engineer for those fields. Something we're considering right now, but I just want to share that with the board. If there's any concerns you have regarding my potential work, my firm's been really with that process. I know that it's a process entirely by purpose, or we're just basically, we're not wanting to do that. So if there are any complaints, I'd be interested in that.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson, appreciate that. Any other reports from board members?
Actually, I have something for you to think about. I want to, we wanted to tie them very well with community engagement and also with Mr. Paulson's remarks about Edison. And I don't want to take the long time, I just want to kind of throw this idea out there. But, you know, I'm very jealous every year when Mr. Roman talks about how he's visited all of the schools and talked to the principals and just, you know, it just, anyway. So we discussed at our leadership meeting, when we set the agenda for tonight about, how can we be more connected with our schools? And this is not a problem for Mr. Paulson, obviously. But for some of us whose kids have graduated, you know, it can be a burden. And so I said, well, maybe we could all, you know, adopt Mr. Roman's process here and go visit all 20 schools. And we're not sure that's going to be such a good use of the principal's time. We have all said we're willing to one point and another visit schools. So Dr. Harris had a great suggestion in that maybe we could adopt a school or two or three, each one of us. Kind of have that as a school that we kind of connect with. And so we would maybe join their PTA, we would, you know, be the president of the school, as a principal, at least one during the school year, get on the school's mailing list, get newsletters, maybe go to their special events. So I'm just going to throw on this out there tonight, I'll send you an email with this. But I see lots of heads nodding, so I'm kind of feeling that maybe this is something we would engage in or, you know, feel positive about. Yeah, we'll just first come first serve official if you want, you know. So I didn't know that, you know, just for you. We were thinking it would be nice to kind of do, like for you, maybe some south side schools, or maybe it is the north side, you know, for us to kind of switch around and not necessarily be the schools that we're already familiar with, or at least for one of them. I mean, you want to be comfortable, and especially for those of you who have kids in the schools, you know, you will be attending those events. So, but, you know, it's nice to kind of see what you have these experiences to make for us. So, but yeah, we could, we'll put out a picture screen. All right, so you don't get, you don't get an email from the internet? All right, thank you.
How many, five, twenty, seven? Is that part of the cover?
One of us probably did two. So maybe those of you who had children in the school, we got, you know, one of you would get two, vision, you know, let's see.
Are there any announcements? Sorry, any other reports from board members? Okay, a topic for future discussion, obviously, on September 25th. Both teams are already not in the budget, so that's a future, any announcements?
I just have one that I left out, the superintendent's report, as an FYI, that the Reek North Falcons and the Warrenville Soft Tigers will be locked on the gridiron this Friday night. So it will be a community event, as always, and both teams are off to a great start. So I will be there and I'll see several board members there as well. It will be a good evening for Reek football.
All righty, our next target meeting will be September 25th at the School Service Center. And now we're to the point where we get some comments on that agenda item. And the same rules apply, as I mentioned earlier, three minutes. And to preserve the confidentiality of the individuals, the board does reserve the right to request that items relating to personnel or students be provided to the board privately or in writing. And please understand that lack of action on your comments tonight does not imply any lack of interest in what we have to say. So first is Andrew Johnson.
So, first, Susan Johnson.
Good evening, I'm Andy Johnson, living in 37040 Berkeley Avenue, and it's such a pleasure to be standing here, and it's nice to see you all today. I come to you tonight to ask one, that perhaps all of you adopt Jefferson as your experience, as well as your experience, and that you not forget Jefferson as you go forward, as the new chairman of the Friends of the Schools Committee, taking over that responsibility from Adam Lisa Wagner, I want to thank them for their efforts, they have done other things, and more time with their families, they've expended a great deal of effort and time and personal fortune into the effort for the referendum, I know the timing is tight, anything in March, or mid-March, but perhaps next year, we'll be again playing the groundwork for that referendum, the support for that referendum, make a successful referendum to replace this school, as we all sweated through this meeting, though this is certainly not educational, an appropriate educational environment for the kids that are here, and it's not just something that affects the kids that are here, and the staff that are here, but then goes on to affect every school in this district, no preaching required because you all know that. So, Monica, I undertake the responsibilities of the committee chair people for the time being, we're looking for volunteers as we go forward for that, and as we eventually ramp up to a successful referendum to replace this building, which one that matches all 19 other buildings in the district, that are curriculum-driven, and driven program needs for kids that are looking forward to helping with, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Susan Moody.
Hi, I'm Susan Moody, sitting for AYSR Road in Wheaton. My husband and I moved to Wheaton in 2004, six weeks after we were married, we knew we wanted to start a family in the next few years, so we chose Wheaton because the schools were heralded as being one of the best in the western suburbs, our house was a bit of a stretch financially, but we knew it was an investment in our children's future that was worth every penny. In 2006, we welcomed our first son, Graham, in 2009, he entered Jefferson in what we thought was a simple speech today, because of Jefferson, we learned it was much more. Graham was formally diagnosed with Asperger's Syndrome in 2010, it was at that point that we truly realized what Jefferson was providing for our son, and that it was almost a safe haven in a world in which we had no idea where we were going to be dropped. In early 2013, our second son, Ian, was finishing his second year at Jefferson, and finally, Jefferson was on the cusp of getting facilities that truly needed, I was passionate about this fragile referendum and did everything I could in time to educate anyone who was listening, so many people I knew were completely in support, but we didn't have enough of them stepping up to the microphone, those opposing the referendum were loud, constantly stepping up to the microphone, and they used every avenue possible to poison the accurate information out there, I knew the sound was conservative, and I knew it wouldn't be easy, but when the referendum failed, my faith in this community was significantly damaged. We had just moved into a new home, our forever home, nine months earlier, and I actually began to wonder if we should move out of this district and into one where people were more like-minded, where they supported education, and where people didn't believe that my son was subbing resources out of the school system. It wasn't that the referendum failed, it was that I felt my community had failed my son, and so many other kids liked him. My husband agreed, but he also saw the opportunity and the situation, he said we can leave, or we can stay, and be a voice for change, and be a voice for these kids, and parents, and teachers, in other words, we can step up to the microphone too. We are very lucky, and our son's needs are very manageable, we are also extremely fortunate in that we can afford additional therapies he needs outside of school, however, there are many families who have school services as their only option, because of that, I want those kids to have the best care that this community can provide, and we can provide so much better than this. You as a school board have a very tough challenge in front of you, there are a lot of people who step up to this podium in order to criticize and fingerpoint, and it appears to be the opposite. I believe that the decisions you are making are reasonable and sound, I believe you understand that our tax dollars are not to be squandered, but I also want you to continue to fight this fight for a new Jefferson with everything you have, we need to find a way to make this happen, that's not just a mandate, but actually serves these deserving children. Our family does plan to stay in meeting, we also plan to step up to the microphone more often, support you in this fight, and be an advocate for this wonderful school, and the wonderful teachers and therapists who make the magic heck in here, and I'm going to put my faith back into this community, and believe we can do it twice, and we can get this done.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan. Tom Shawnessy?
Tom Shawnessy, 2079 Child's Court, right in the school, if you notice under it with Jefferson, and I put a plus, those are the plus additives, and I don't want you to be angry at me, but try to understand, listen to the message, don't kill the messenger. We have a school over here that was held a middle school, and you turn around and you sold it for $5 million when it was evaluated before the drop in the economy to $20 million. You cheated the taxpayers out of $15 million, that's the perception of many of the taxpayers in this community. Number two, you have two ass superintendents that I'm sure were still paying freight on, and they're gone, and weren't paying for them, and when we were asked, when somebody asked this school board, why were they let go, the answer was kind of, we don't have to tell you, if that's in somebody's contract, you need to remove it, this is not a private company, you're a public entity, you need to be responsive to the taxpayers, tell them the truth, those, one of those superintendents is still teaching somewhere else, he should have been stopped a long time ago. Then, when I asked this school board, not the present one, but the last one, what are you going to do when this gets voted down for Jefferson, he looked at me like I was from Mars, tried to understand the message, we're fed up with paying a lot of taxes, so you get even with us, it's not a hit and do it, but you gave them an increase in pay of $215,000, here's Wheaton on a map, state of Illinois, the governor gets $179,000, he's, he's entitled to $36,000 more a year, there's a problem here, and you're not listening to the taxpayers, and I also want to say, my wife is a learning disability specialist in 204, so I am sensitive to what the school is about, but you need to listen to the taxpayers, maybe, each one of you who ran for office, need to go into evenings and on weekends and knock on doors and ask the people why they voted it down, and what you can do to change it, don't take it yet to, you ran for office, you got elected, now I don't have to worry anymore, maybe you need to go back to those doors and ask some questions.
Thank you, Mr. Shawnessy. Carol Holmes?
Carol Holmes, 26W U 274 Pinehurst Drive, 15, earlier this evening, there was a discussion about the extra funds we had received from the corporate tax, and there's, I mean, $200,000 allocated towards technology, but also, the same break earlier, there was a discussion about how we lose power at the service center, and the whole network was down throughout the district, now, since we have $200,000 to spend, how about allocating some of that money towards bringing up backup generators in, there's, I've heard that discussion at all things, from all spoken, and to tech on network infrastructure, and the other thing is, with that $525,000, every, every dollar we get in, seems somehow to spend, how come we don't put some money away in the fund balance then, so we can fund at Jefferson or do something else with the money on a rainy day, now I'm not saying to put all the $525 in, but at least allocate part of it, that's it.
Dr. Harris, is there a, clarify something?
Just a one point of clarification, that in my comments, and I apologize if I wasn't clear, but the board understood that, that that would be consideration, we would look at, you know, some kind of backup power source for our main server centers, just as a point of clarification.
Excuse me, Mr. Holmes, did you, touch that, I was unsure, if I saw your conversion kind of, make sure that you, you heard what Dr. Harris said, that part of that $200,000 is going to go toward technology, this going to look at backup generators, so that when power is lost at the SSC, we don't take them in there, that's pretty police.
I feel the belt of the police address and fund balance issue just moved earlier, the fund balance does not to be available, dependent to, for special projects, the fund balance is to be available so that we don't have to issue that to space wars, pay, pay payroll, or to meet other urgency needs, we had a history where we did take funds from the fund balance to meet some capital needs, and it took us some time to restore that fund balance to the level that we're now rated as the top level category of financial responsible districts in the state, and we did bid to that fund balance to pay for new Jefferson or new facilities, we were responsible, to, or already financially according to that one state for education, so we have a policy that was adopted three years ago, to maintain the fund balance at a certain percentage of our revenue expenditures, so that we could maintain our, our position as a top rated financially sound district.
Thank you, Scott. Last person, Laura Stevens.
Hi, I'm Laura Stevens, and I live at 377 World Record in Wheaton, I am a mother of three kids in the district, a sophomore, an eighth grader, and a seventh grader, and I'm also a mom of athletes, I attend this mandatory sporting, sport night for players and parents at South High School, and the message is very clear to parents there, keep your kids involved, keep them in sports, it keeps them busy and out of trouble, it encourages them to play for their school, and do not bypass school sports to play tribal teams and move school sports. I also today enjoyed a volleyball game between Monroe Middle School and Edison Middle School, in which 50 girls participated, the sad thing is, 100 girls couldn't participate tonight. Last few years, I've watched many things we caught due to, due to funding, like academic programs as well as clubs and activities, but it's time to consider bringing back some of those programs before adding new programs, the community voiced their strong opinions to retain B-team sports at the time of their elimination, and the district promised to discuss bringing them back later, and even as the years pass, and the voices are diminishing, we must not forget to revisit the subject, please, make playing for your school important again, please consider putting B-team sports back on your agenda for next year, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevens. Is there anyone else who requested or do not sign up, who wishes to speak in further capacity? Okay, we do have a need for a close session tonight, for the purchase or release of real property and collective negotiating matters, so do I hear a motion to return to close out? Looked by Mr. Paulman?
Yes.
Signed by Mr. Paulson? Mrs. Stephanie Calorovitz?
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Gianniani?
Yes.
Mrs. Cackel?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mrs. Interhart?
Yes.